All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
We have the office oaths first.
Oh, sure, okay, sorry. All right, moving on to the oath of office. At this time, I ask newly elected board members to rise to take the school board oath of office. This will be followed by Barb Wench taking the oath of office to serve on the Wisconsin State District Boundary Appeal Board.
So she just go in front here. Stand in front of the school district.
I don't have a folder. Not that I see.
Thank you.
Stand across the room.
We're going to rehearse it first.
Okay. You gotta raise your right hand. Oh, here Maggie, Maggie, here you go, sorry. That will help.
Thank you, this makes more sense, okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jennifer Deek.
Who have been duly elected to the Holman Board of Education.
Who have been duly elected.
Holman Board of Education.
Of the school district of Holman.
School District of Holman.
But have not yet endured upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Jordan, guardian state attorney. I state your name. I, Barb Wench, who have been appointed to the school district boundary appeal board. So that appointed to the school district boundary appeal board. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
All right.
Okay, now Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Nead.
Excused.
Maggie Smith here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Kiven Zilke. Did I say that right?
Zilke.
Zilke.
Here, okay. All right, with six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie has second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. Okay, we're moving on to board organization. So our first official action of the organizational portion of the meeting is to appoint a temporary chair to conduct the board officers' election. So I entertain a motion to appoint a temporary chair for the board officers' election.
I would move to appoint Jennifer Deek chair.
Okay, Maggie has moved.
I will second that appointment.
Chris is second to appoint Jennifer Deek as the temporary chair for the board officers' election. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Jennifer Deek as the temporary chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve Jennifer Deek as the temporary chair for the board officers' election has passed. All right, moving on to the election of board officers. First up is the office of the president. Are there any nominations for the office of president?
I nominate Jennifer Deek.
Okay, are there any other nominations? And a third time, any other nominations? Okay, I'm willing to accept that nomination, and since there's only one nomination, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Jennifer Deek for the office of president.
So moved.
That was Maggie?
Yep.
Maggie has moved.
Second.
Bridget, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right, next up is the vice president. Are there any nominations for the office of vice president?
I will nominate Chris Lau.
All right, any other nominations? And for a third time, any other nominations? So Chris, are you willing to accept this nomination?
I am.
Okay, since there is only one nomination, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Chris Lau for the office of vice president.
So moved.
That was Kadija. And do I have a second?
Second.
Barb, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next up is the office of clerk. Are there any nominations for the office of clerk?
I'll nominate Maggie Smith.
Are there any other nominations? And a third time, any other nominations? Maggie, are you willing to accept this nomination?
I am.
All right, since there's only one nomination, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Maggie Smith for the office of clerk.
So moved.
That was Barb?
Second.
Barb has moved.
Second.
Bridget has second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right, and the last office is that of treasurer. Are there any nominations for the office of treasurer?
I'll nominate Barb Wench.
Okay, are there any other nominations? And a third time, any other nominations? Barb, are you willing to accept this nomination?
Yes.
Since there's only one nomination, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Barb Wench for the office of treasurer.
So moved.
Maggie has moved.
I will second.
Chris is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right, to all the school board officers, a sincere thank you for your time and input during the 2023-24 school year, and I look forward to continuing to work with all you again over this next year. All right, moving on to item 7.3, the designation of special depositories. Dr. Mueller.
So according to our board policy 6144, we have specific procedures that we follow for investment practices in the district. Administration is recommending to keep our investment depositories that we currently have of Cooley Bank, the State of Wisconsin Local Government Investment Pool, also known as LGIP, the Associated Trust Company, and the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, which is also known as WISC. And then also, our checking services, we would like to continue with our checking accounts with Cooley Bank. So that would be our recommendations.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to designate Cooley Bank, LGIP, Associated Trust Company, and the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative as the district's official investment depositories, and Cooley Bank as the checking depository.
So moved.
Barb has moved.
I can second.
Chris is second to approve the above mentioned as the official depositories. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the official depositories as designated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion has passed. All right, moving on to item 7.4, designation of official newspaper. Dr. Mueller.
We have had and used the La Crosse Tribune as our official newspaper since 2019-20, and it has worked very well. We recommend continuing using La Crosse Tribune as our official newspaper. It costs an average of $500 per month, so that's our recommendation.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve designating the La Crosse Tribune as the official newspaper for the district.
So moved.
Kadija?
That was Maggie.
Maggie.
But I'll second.
Okay, Maggie has moved, Kadija has second to approve the La Crosse Tribune as the district official newspaper. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the La Crosse Tribune, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the La Crosse Tribune as the official district newspaper has passed. Moving on to item 7.5, the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association membership. Dr. Mueller.
So each year, the school board needs to renew membership with the WIAA in order for our district athletic teams to be eligible for any state-sponsored tournaments and to meet the qualification of the leagues for the district to participate. Once again, they are waiving fees this year, so the recommendation is to continue our membership with WIAA.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2024-2025 WIAA membership for district activities.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Bridget has second to approve membership in the WIAA. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve membership in the WIAA, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve membership in the WIAA for district activities has passed. Moving on to item 7.6, the Wisconsin Association of School Board membership.
So each year, the school board must determine if they would like to renew their membership with the Wisconsin Association of School Board, also known as referred to as WASB. The purpose of this organization is to assist our public school board and agencies to help help with their functions and also provide professional development and so forth. The membership is approximately around 12,000 for the year. So we're recommending to continue the membership with WASB for our, and continue services with them.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the district's 2024-2025 WASB membership as presented.
So moved.
Maggie has moved.
Second.
Kadija has second to approve the WASB membership. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve WASB membership, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the WASB membership for the district has passed. Moving on to item 7.7, designation of WASB representative.
So with being a part of having the WASB membership, each year, the school board must identify someone from the board who will be the official board contact and voting member for WASB. Bridget was the representative for the 23-24 school year, and the person who is, becomes the WASB representative of the board is asked to attend the annual convention scheduled for January 21st through 25th of 2025 in Milwaukee to fulfill their responsibilities. So with that.
Okay, so Lindsay Nead indicated her willingness to be designated as the WASB representative prior to this meeting, and I wanted to check to see if there was any other interest from any other board members before we move forward. Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to appoint Lindsay Nead as the 2024-2025 WASB representative.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Barb has second. To appoint Lindsay Nead as the WASB representative. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Lindsay Nead as the WASB representative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve Lindsay Nead as the WASB rep has passed. Moving on to item 7.8, the designation of CISA IV representative.
So each year, the school board must identify a board member who will be our official board contact and voting member for CISA. Their responsibilities would be to attend the annual convention held on June 5th, beginning at 6:30 PM at our CISA IV location in West Salem. So with that.
Okay, so looking for interest on the, as a CISA IV representative? Something you're interested in?
Yeah.
Kadija's interested, is there any other interest? Okay, I would entertain a motion to appoint Kadija Islam as the 2024-2025 CISA IV representative.
So moved.
That was Maggie?
I'll second.
And Chris is second. A motion to approve, appoint Kadija Islam as the CISA IV representative. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Kadija Islam as the CISA IV representative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve Kadija Islam as the CISA IV representative has passed. Moving on to item 7.9, designation of school board meeting dates and times.
So each year, the school board needs to identify when the regular business meetings of the district will occur, according what we have done in the past in past practice, and is to have our board meetings the second and fourth Monday of each month. So the Board of Education meeting calendar includes the second and fourth Monday of each month, with our annual meeting being on the fourth Monday in October, besides the board meeting. And also, one other clarification would be in December, we would only hold one meeting on December 9th. So with that, that would be our board meeting calendar for the 24-25 scheduled year.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2024-2025 board meeting calendar as provided.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie has second to approve the 24-25 board meeting calendar as provided. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the 24-25 board meeting calendar as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right, moving on to item eight. Each year, the school district of Holman invites local lawmakers to attend a board meeting to provide an update on legislation impacting public education and share their thoughts. I would like to welcome State Representative Steve Doyle to the presenter's table.
Thank you very much, and let me start out by doing another thank you, and that is thanking each of you for your service on the school board or in different positions with the school. I kind of think that my state assembly job is kind of important, but your job, dealing with our kids' education, is probably the most important thing that anybody could do, so thank you so much for that. I'm always pleased to be here, always enjoy coming to school board meetings. And last week, I went through the same thing you just did with county board stuff, so now that you've got all of the administrative stuff out of the way, you can get into the more fun stuff. What I want to do tonight is to talk about the bills that have passed and become law during this session of the legislature. For those of you who are returning members, I did talk about some of these bills last time I was here, but now we are done for the two-year term. And I can kind of give you the final results on what I would consider the most important ones. There's some other ones in here that I'm not going to talk about, but let me cover about a dozen or so, and I'm going to zip right through them. If you have any questions, stop me or ask at the end, I'd be happy to, you know, give any further information. So the first one is the Wisconsin Merit Scholarship. It eliminates the April 1st, 2023 sunset date, and so that is an ongoing program, scholarships of $5,000 given to students who graduate from an in-state high school based on performance on standardized tests and cumulative high school GPAs. The next one is the personal financial literacy law. That was one that was lobbied on by the financial advisors throughout the state. What they had been seeing with young people getting out of school and going into the real world and not knowing what, how to do checks, how to handle loans, what interest rates relate to, and so forth. And so they, they've been lobbying us for probably the last three sessions, and that bill passed in this last session and was signed by the governor. The next law is the Narcan bill, which does some stuff and not other stuff. What it does is it creates liability protections if you have Narcan in the school to be used for overdoses. So that part's good. The part that's not there is providing any funding for you to actually buy that stuff, which isn't cheap. And so hopefully, that will be, two years from now, when I'm here, I'll be able to tell you, and now we've got funding to go along with it. But right now, if you provide it, you do have a liability protection. The next one is directing school boards to provide instruction on Hmong Americans and Asian Americans. That would be in your human relations instruction on Indigenous, Black, and Hispanic Americans, so you would fold into that. In case you're not busy enough yet, we did pass a law that allows a school board member to serve as a volunteer school bus driver, so feel welcome to sign up whenever you want.
Yes.
Next is tier one license issued by DPI, which mental health providers can receive a license from DPI to perform work in schools, and this is specifically aimed at marriage and family therapists. I'm just going to mention the next one because I understand you have people here that know way, way more about early literacy than I do, so it creates the Office of Literacy in DPI, talks about all sorts of things that you must do and can't do and so forth, so I'm not going to spend any further time on that. Next, guaranteed admission to University of Wisconsin system institutions and tech colleges, and requiring schools to prepare class rankings for certain pupils. So this guaranteed admission, if you are in the top 5%, you're guaranteed admission to any UW school, including Madison. If you're in the top 10%, you are guaranteed admission to any school in the UW system with the exception of Madison. So what we're trying to do is to encourage people to stay in our state. We've had that brain drain for so long where people, you know, they're the best and the brightest, and whether they graduate from high school or they graduate from college, and then they're out of here. What we're trying to do is to find more and more ways to keep people in our state, and this is just one of many of those. The next bill was ready to use glucagen rescue therapies in schools, so this is for diabetic students. What it does is allows you to use those in school, again, provide liability protections if you have those available in the school. Next is technical education equipment grants, and the, that program has been in place with a maximum grant of $50,000, now increasing that amount to $100,000, that's for technical education grants and the acquisition of equipment used in advanced manufacturing. What we're seeing in the state legislature is, over the last probably three or four terms now, more of a pairing with our schools and our tech schools and our business community, so that, and you're probably doing some of these onsite type of programs now. This is, again, one more thing to just kind of continue with that pairing. The next are national reading program grants. There's a $500,000 annual appropriation, and DCF will establish a program to award grants for the provision of books to children. This is partnering with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Another one relating to health matters, supply and use of short-acting bronchodilators on school premises or at a school-sponsored event. Creates approved protocols and medical orders for registered nurses and licensed practical nurses, so that if you have someone, a student with respiratory distress, that those are available. Next is one that I really like. It doesn't exactly have to do with you folks, but people in your schools. Local regulation of certain businesses operated by minors. Local government cannot require you to get a permit for your lemonade stand if you are a minor, so we're backing people, this is deregulation, I guess you could call it. So if your elementary school student wants to set up that lemonade stand, the village of Holman cannot require them to get a license, so very excited about that. A couple criminal law-related things that kind of tie in with schools. First is the expanding the definition of what a strip search is, and making it more limited in what a non-police officer can do in terms of a strip search of a student. It does not change what a law enforcement officer can do, but does put some restrictions on school personnel. Next one is sexual misconduct against a pupil by a school staff member or volunteer. So under this law, when a law enforcement or a social services or human services agency receives a report of misconduct, they are required to contact DPI, the name of that person, and the terms of the violation. If that person is convicted, they are convicted of what is now going to be known as a Class I felony. And if you are convicted of a Class I felony, that automatically revokes your license, a lifetime loss of a teaching license. So again, we're taking that one very seriously. The last thing I want to talk about is the issue that got a fair amount of attention after the passage of the budget, and that was the governor's creative partial veto where the $325 per pupil amount was listed as an increase for 2023-2024 through 2024-2025. By just a little elimination of a couple digits and a dash here and there, it would then go on to say 2023 to 2425, so guaranteed for the next 400 years that we're going to have this per pupil increase. The Wisconsin Manufacturers Association and some other entities filed suit against the governor on that, and they filed it directly with the state Supreme Court, which is kind of an unusual approach. Frequently, these things will start at a lower level and work their way up. This one, however, was filed directly with the Supreme Court. We've not heard yet if the Supreme Court is going to accept that one. So that is everything that I had in terms of laws that we have passed. The last comment I want to make is one that is more expressing a concern, and that is the trend that we are seeing lately with regard to partisan politics in our local elections. We've seen that for the last two or three elections. I know you've had some experience with that. The county board had experience with it in this one. And what we're seeing is one political party does it, and so the other political party says, well, I guess we have to do it too. And you've got this kind of vicious cycle where it goes back and forth. I can tell you, in my county board race, my opponent sent out, I think it was, or actually, the Republican Party sent out like six attack mailers against me. You guys do stuff for the love of kids, and nobody should be sending out attack mailers against you folks, whether it's the Democrats, Republicans, or whomever. We should be getting back to the days of voting for somebody instead of voting against somebody. So that's my soapbox. There's not a dang thing I can do about that other than complain, but I thank you for your service in keeping it above board and doing it for the right reasons rather than for some sort of an agenda. So again, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I know you guys have a lot of stuff to talk about in your organizational meeting here.
Yeah, I got, I got one for you. So like, school districts across the state of Wisconsin are clearly feeling the pinch financially with declining enrollment, the inflation, caps on revenue, I don't know, the SRF funds expiring and stuff like that. So this last spring, there's been, this, at the spring election, there was a record number of referenda put on the ballots. I think 103, actually, that was the most since the year 2000. And 60% of them passed, which is the lowest percentage of referenda to pass since 2010. And it's disheartening because these school districts are asking for taxpayer dollars, and there's winners and there's losers. So 60% are getting their funds to operate and continue with student services and education, and 40% aren't. And it just feels like if we're asking for taxpayer dollars, why can't that be given equally to all districts across the state of Wisconsin through increasing the revenue limits?
I agree with you 100%. Budgeting by referendum is not a good way of budgeting. It is a recipe for disaster. And Jennifer, I'm glad you mentioned what happened in this last election because before that, we were seeing actually pretty high numbers of referendum questions passing, and people saying, well, of course, we need to fund our schools. And I think that we have hit that stage of referendum fatigue, and I'm concerned what that bodes for the future, in that if it's 60% this time, is it going to be less than 50% going forward? And, you know, it's kind of sexy maybe to do some new, you know, athletic field or a gym or something like that. But for operating budgets, to go to the voters and say, to keep our doors open and to pay our staff, we need money. I mean, to me, that should be the easiest sell of all, but it seems like it's harder to do that because it's not something that gets people's attention. If you, if you have that little shiny thing out there, it's easier to sell that than the day-to-day unsexy stuff involved in keeping the doors open. We have to change that law. I mean, the school funding formula is a disaster. The limits on all local government, you have The limits on all local government, you have a different kind of limit than the other local governments have, but they're all limits. We really need to revisit that because this is not sustainable. And especially in a time of declining enrollment, it's only going to get tougher. I mean, preaching to the choir here, obviously, but I mean, I'm very concerned, and I'm going to take that question back to Madison with me and say, you know, when I talk to the school board people, this is, the first question that they ask me is, how are we going to be able to do this going forward? So thank you for asking that question, and I will be your messenger.
All right. I appreciate that, and it really needs to, it really needs to focus on the revenue limit. It needs to be increased drastically or get rid of the cap or something, because just saying that you're sending more general aid, state aid, to the district isn't helping the district because it's just decreasing property taxes. So it's like, it's a no-win situation, really.
Yeah, when we talk about, you know, record amounts of money for our schools, it sounds really great until you realize what it really means, is it was property tax relief and didn't, I mean, it helped, but it didn't solve the problem, and it was not exactly what it was made out to be. Yeah, I think that that is important, that it seems like if you get elected to the legislature, suddenly now you are smarter than everybody else, and we should tell you how to do your business. But you're the folks that run into people at the post office, at the grocery store, you know, when you're walking down the street, who can tell you, hey, you're spending too much money, or hey, you should be spending more money for our kids. Those of us who, you know, are dealing with other things in addition to education, and we go off to Madison, it used to be, and I don't want to be partisan here, but it used to be that everybody, both parties talked about wanting to be the party of local control. That is out the window these days. We are the party or the state of micromanagement where we are telling you, A, how to do things, but not, B, here's the money to do them. And that, you know, WASBE and the other associations for local governments across the state, that is a message they've been delivering. They need to keep delivering that message because I don't think that the message has been getting through the way that it needs to be. I mean, we gotta stop micromanaging what you do. You know, the voter said, you should do it. You're in charge. They picked you. They didn't pick us to make your decisions. They picked you, and that's how it should be.
All right, thanks. Any other questions?
I have, I guess, two bills that I'll use the airtime to flag that didn't go anywhere in the last session that I feel strongly about. One is Healthy School Meals for All. I think it was in the Senate, and that one would remove the barrier of cost for school meals across the state. We've seen decreases in kids eating breakfast since those pandemic waivers expired. It feels like, to me, the right thing to do for everyone, so I hope to see that one, see action on that coming up this next session.
Emily, stop you on that one. That is really critical. I've done a fair amount of reading on the number of kids that are getting those meals, but also the number of kids that need those meals, that aren't getting those meals. I don't know how we can expect kids to learn if they're starting school with an empty stomach. So it's disappointing that it didn't make it through. These last two sessions, what we've had happen is bills passed the assembly and then they died in the Senate. So when Brad Path comes, you just yell at him.
I already did.
All right, good.
I think it also had a reimbursement for locally sourced foods, which is just like another benefit to me.
That's the thing these days that we do a lot of talking about. So yeah, let's put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah. The other one is Healthy Youth Act. So that was also reintroduced, Healthy Youth Act.
Oh, okay.
Also reintroduced in the Senate this last session. It was law back, way back '09, repealed in 2011, and that one is around human growth and development for public schools. I don't know if you've read our Human Growth and Development statute anytime recently. It's very piecemealed together as a result of that overturned law, and it no longer includes some safeguards around teaching students about contraception or consent or healthy relationships. I know you're very tuned into the county, and maybe you've seen the county's STI rates in young people. They're really high and climbing.
Our health department has given us those reports lately, and yes, they are frightening.
Yes. So Healthy Youth Act, Better Sex Ed is Prevention, in my book. And then the third thing I was going to say is-
Well, let me just say, I agree with that. We need to set aside the culture wars that we have going on in the state and across the country, and if we don't teach about those things, that doesn't mean they're not going to happen, you know? And trying to convince my colleagues of that sometimes is a little frustrating.
I believe it. The final thing I was going to say was just a thank you for sending out the personalized letters you send to the kids who make the honor roll. I had one this last term, and it made his day. He squirreled it away in his little memento box, and I thought it was very meaningful that you take the time to do that for our kids.
I always tell people, my two favorite parts of this job are sending out those honor roll letters. And as I mentioned to a couple of you, it used to be about 1,800. Now, district, my Assembly District-wide is getting up to about 2,000. I love doing it. I mean, I can sit in my office and I can do those, and it's not like knocking on doors in the rain or in the snow or anything. I love doing it, and I love it when people say, you know, I got one of those letters because it tells me that we have smart people out there. But the second thing that I really love doing too, the other part of my job, is when fourth graders come to the Capitol, I love meeting them in the Capitol if I'm in town that day, and I love coming back to the schools and asking the fourth graders questions about what, A, that they learned in the Capitol, the cool things that they learned in the Capitol, and things like, you know, who's our governor, who's our state senator, you know, how many houses do we have in the legislature? And those kids are smart. And I'll tell you, the most exhausting days that I have are not when I'm in court, not when I'm dealing with clients, it's when I'm done with the fourth graders, I have to go and sit down in my car and rest for a while because these kids are so smart, and they ask such great questions. I just love doing that. And so I'm glad that yours got an honor roll letter. I know several other families here told me the same thing. I love doing it. It's fun.
All right. Anything else, anyone? All right, thank you.
As always, thanks for inviting me to join you, and anytime you ever have any questions, call me, call my office, and be happy to get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any public participation this evening, so I'm moving on to the district administrator's report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I first want to just start by congratulating Barb on her service that she's going to do with the state, being on a school district boundary appeal board. That is just quite an honor to be a part of something like that and represent, and actually, you know, you're on the school district of Holman School Board representing us up at that state level, so thank you very much, Barb, for that. And then also, you had probably seen on, in our, I don't know, Facebook and so forth, and we've talked about the National History Day teachers and their state recognition, and they are continuing on for the national award, which is very exciting. We've, you know, this is the first time that actually we've had a team of teachers moving on to that for the National History Day. So we'll wait and see and see how that plays out, but we wish them the best in this and so on. And then wanted to congratulate our 20 Holman High School students that competed this last weekend at state forensics competition, and we had 17 Holman High School students did their letter of intent signing day to play their athletics after their high school careers in college level, so that's exciting. And lastly, just wanted to thank the partners that we have and that were around sharing their expertise on Earth Day. It was great to see, we had the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I saw that we had someone visit at Prairie View with our, you know, with the owl and so on. That was really cool. And we also had lacrosse storytelling, so just that, it's neat to have a day like Earth Day and just to see all the partners that come and really help educate our students and do some out-of-the-box fun events. So thanks to the staff and administrators that helped in planning that for our students. So that's what I have for that.
All right. Moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Well, May 6th to the 10th is Staff Appreciation Week. Just want to really take a few moments to thank all of our staff for all they do day in and day out. Yes, we see them here in the buildings, but we know that their work doesn't stop inside our school buildings. Their work continues around the clock in supporting our students and in all their needs. And just, just join me in, you know, thanking them, and as you see them in the next week, or if you have someone who's done extra special things, just take that time to let them know that. I think that goes a long ways with our staff. The reason they're here is they're here for our students, and we couldn't do it without them. So just thank you, and we recognize them for all their hard work.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 12.1, Director of Transportation Dan Garrett will present the school bus bid results for approval on tonight's consent agenda.
Hello. Thank you. I'll just, we, I told you about the bids coming up, and earlier this month, we had three vendors that responded to those bids. Out of those three vendors, only two of them met our qualifications that we're looking for. So with those vendors that came back, there was a pretty big price gap because we were going for a snubnose bus, which is typically more expensive than the conventional buses. So our recommendation that we're coming back with is a Thomas Bus by Nelson Bus Sales. This came back, it's probably a little bit more expensive than the buses we have been ordering in the past because of the snubnose, and because it's got extra accessories like air disc brakes versus aerodrome brakes, which are mechanics or the like. It helps with the terrain that this bus is going to be in. We picked it for a specific route, and so that was one of the costs we were looking at. Any questions on the recommendations or what we sent out earlier?
All right. Any questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to item 12.2, Director of Facility Services Trad Brando will present the Sand Lake and Prairie View site improvement bids for approval on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening. Quickly, just wanted to share, these are the bid packages, or it's bid package seven for Sand Lake and for Prairie View site work. We had four bids. The low bid came in at $171,300, $78,700 under our estimate. These are for Sand Lake and for Prairie View, and there won't be any for the Evergreen or Viking because those site work funds are already inside the bigger project for those schools. So this should be the only site work that you see separately coming for the referendum.
Okay. Any questions? All right, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 12.3, Director of Business Services Crystal Mott will present the 2024-25 Employee Benefits Renewal, also for approval on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening. I'm going to have Julie Holman with me here. We'll both be presenting. So tonight, we will be presenting our employee benefit renewal information that's effective July 1st, 2024. We do have this information on consent tonight as well. It includes our health insurance, our dental insurance, our life and disability plans, the all-state plans, some participation information on our HSA and ABP plans, and upcoming education for our staff. So looking back for a moment, last year, our initial renewal from our incumbent carrier, which is WCA Group Health Trust, was at 15%. We were able to successfully negotiate that to 4.7%, but that did include plan design changes, which were increasing the deductibles on the plan. It was at the same time that we began exploring other options so that we could keep our plan design changes to a minimum and keeping premium rates as stable as possible. This year, we did receive a quote from WCA. The initial renewal came in at 13.5%, and our most recent negotiation has our renewal at 4.01. So in doing some of the other review of options, we had an opportunity to learn more about Ticket Health Solutions. This is a cooperative health model, so this is different than our fully funded model with WCA, and this is about 50 regional employers that are working together to help control costs. The Ticket Health Solution has secured several direct care contracts with high-quality care partners, so that should help provide more access and care for our employees. In the quote that we received from Ticket Health, our plan would renew at less than 1.75%. So we are recommending joining Ticket Health for 2425. To expand on their program a little more, we do retain the same Gunderson access through the Alliance Network. Our access to the Mayo Clinic has improved through a direct contract that Ticket Health has, and this should positively impact the cost of claims, both for employees seeking care and for what we see for the employer side as well. With the Mayo contract, they have a complex care component, which just provides those with rare or undiagnosed medical conditions additional care. This, Ticket Health also has the Cigna network, which would kind of be that RAP network for individuals traveling outside of our area or for covered, perhaps, children that are living outside of our local area. Ticket Health Solutions has additional mental health and employee assistant programs included in this group, and there are incentives for both employees and the district for making smart healthcare decisions in this program. This is just a quick review of our plan for last year, current year, and looking ahead. Again, if we, with Ticket Health, we would not have any plan design change for 2425. Always just like to remind you, our plan is a high deductible health plan, that's HSA, Health Savings Account Compatible. The district does make contributions to that HSA, which is not required, but is an additional benefit that we see on that plan. We contribute $750 as a base for those with single coverage and $1,500 for those with family coverage. And employees on health insurance have an opportunity to receive additional contributions through our wellness program, taking that maximum benefit for those with single coverage to $1,500. Those on family with no participating spouse can receive $2,250, and those on family with both participating up to $3,000. And here, we just like to remind you of our work to kind of keep our premiums as stable as possible. We are, in our review, always looking, and the trend has been a 6% increase, as is shown by the gray line. So our premium with the employees portion in the orange is shown here. And the next slide, I'm sorry, that was for single. This one here is for the family coverage, and again, the district is paying 85% of that family plan. In our review, we are always looking at local districts as well and kind of comparing what is offered in plan design and affordability. We do have 2324, so current year information for both La Crosse and Onalaska. We know that in this year, Onalaska changed to a quartz HMO plan, which locally would offer access to Gunderson only. We do have La Crosse's current, but we've heard for 2425. There's some major plan design changes that may be occurring, including deductible and maximum out-of-pocket increases, and only having access to Mayo through an out-of-network via plan. So again, we are proud that we can continue to offer our employees the choice to treat either Gunderson or Mayo. So with the recommendation and that less than 1.75 renewal, this chart has been updated to reflect the premium change- has been updated to reflect the premium change for the employee portion, including the per-check increase if based on 24 checks over the year. So individuals with single coverage would pay $21.60 more than last year, and those with family coverage would pay $54 more. And this next slide here shows the estimated cost for the employer portion, including the premium, the HSA benefit that again, we offer, the ABP premium, and the capital contribution, which would be part of the Ticket Health Solution.
I'm going to turn it over to Julie.
Thank you, Crystal. So I'm going to continue with other employee benefits, beginning with the health insurance, I mean dental insurance plan for group and voluntary dental. The, we have our coverage through Delta Dental, and that renewal is 6%. For a single coverage, we'll pay $6.24 more than current year, and for family coverage, $16.32 more. The district does pay 80% of this premium, and the estimated increased district employer cost is $22,568. All these estimates are based on current participation, assuming they would carry into next year, so they are estimates at this time. Next up is life insurance and disability. We currently have our coverage through Kansas City Life, and we intend to continue that coverage. The district offers employer-paid life insurance and long-term disability. Employees can elect additional life insurance for themselves, spouse, and our dependents, and then short-term disability is a voluntary option for our employees. There is no rate increase for Kansas City Life for 24-25, and this is a two-year rate guarantee, so locked in through fiscal year '26. Kansas City Life does offer our current employee assistance program and will continue to. As Crystal mentioned, there's also an additional vendor option for support for employee assistance through Ticket Health, so we will have even more resources in that area between both Kansas City Life and Ticket Health for 24-25. We also intend to continue with our all-state plans. We've had these for, oh, maybe four years now. These are voluntary plans, accident, cancer, and critical illness. There's an option to do both single or spouse with those plans, and accident and critical illness will continue to be offered with guaranteed issue. The cancer plan does require evidence of insurability. This slide, we are sharing figures from participation in additional benefits, including our health savings account, the alternative benefit plan, and the wellness program. To remind you, the alternative benefit plan is available to individuals who are eligible to participate in the health insurance and decline or waive coverage. And so the district does pay them cash in lieu of participating in that health insurance. This year, we have 356 employees receiving the HSA contribution from the district. Crystal mentioned what those contributions are, if it's base or qualified for wellness to get the maximum contribution. Of the 356, 87.6% are receiving the maximum contribution, and 12.4% are receiving the base amount. The employer cost for this current year is $747,000. Employees can also participate in the pre-tax HSA contribution through payroll to maximize the calendar IRS allowable contribution, so the difference between the employer and the max, they could do payroll deductions pre-tax and try to max out that savings account. We do have 59% of eligible staff taking advantage of this for a yearly deduction of nearly $500,000. 156 of our employees are eligible for the alternative benefit plan or cash in lieu of health insurance, and 94% of those eligible receive the maximum ABP level, which is either $4,200 or $7,200. If you were hired before July 1 of 2012, it was the hire rate and grandfathered in if they were participating at that higher rate, and then after July 1 of 2012, the maximum is $4,200. And then if they participate in the wellness, they get that full, that full amount. So 94% are receiving the maximum ABP, 6% are receiving only the base amount. Our annual ABP cost as the employer is around $860,000. With our recommendation to move to the cooperative model with Ticket Health, we are excited to educate our employees on the new options available to them to seek care, not only the existing network that we've talked about, Crystal shared earlier, but also additional care partners. So we are in the process of building the education campaign for 24-25 for our employees. Things that are additionally included are built-in care advocacy team, helping employees find local high-quality care, and some of which can provide direct rebates, as Crystal mentioned, back to the employees, and also as you were shared last week when we presented on this option through a board workshop. So it's kind of exciting to be able to, to help influence good, high-quality care decisions for our employees with more options and care partners. There's also prescription solutions to help employees find lower-cost prescriptions, helping to preserve those HSA dollars for other needs or medical. And then, as was mentioned, there are direct contracts with several types of care providers. We have the opportunity to have a direct contract with Mayo. That'll help the employee save money, as well as the loss claims for the total group plan with higher discounts of care at Mayo. And then this is going to help control costs on overall plan and future premiums. Added bonus to this benefit education is it can help both those employees on our plan and employees not on our insurance and taking their insurance elsewhere, but they can learn from the education piece as consumers of their healthcare options.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, no questions.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 12.4, Dr. Mueller will now present the educator compensation model, which will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
All right. Good evening. As we have had much discussion over many years, I think actually since I started here, we've had many compensation model committees and lots of talk around just the educator compensation model. Tonight, I am happy to share that after lots of feedback and lots of input and so on, that based on all of that, that the, the feedback was presented to you, the board, and the board took, is taking the following action for the 24-25 school year for the educator compensation model. So the compensation model for educators is going to be changed to eliminate the longstanding salary matrix consisting of traditional steps and lane schedules. The base wage of an educator will be deemed as their regular 190-day educator contract amount from their prior year. The base wage increase will be applied directly to their prior year base wage amount. The increase will not be applied to any supplemental stipend or extra contract. And the base wage increase amount and distribution of the increase will be bargained with the Home and Education Association on an annual basis, as long as there is a union. And then just also, actually this evening, in our handbook language that will be coming towards the board is the establishment of like a base salary was $46,000 in the employee handbook, which will be coming before the board, because I know many people were asking that. And from the feedback also was, we have, we wanted to make sure it was an amount that wasn't the same as our staff that have been here for a year, because that sometimes would happen in the past. So we wanted to make sure that we honored the longevity of our teachers who have been here for a year, but yet were able to have a reasonable base wage to attract, continue to attract people to the district. Then also, just, this is, will be, is in the, in the employee handbook language, is the supplemental increases for educators moving forward then that the board is taking action on is the earning of a master's degree. And once that's earned, starting in '24, '25, and beyond, so actually for the '25, '26 school year, will be an annual stipend of $3,000 will be provided to the educator. And then we have, will have currently three staff positions that will receive an annual stipend of $5,000 at this time, which is speech-language pathologist, school psychologist, and physical therapist. And so just wanted to bring this before the board, because tonight, part, this is for consent also tonight, to go along with, on your consent agenda, is all the base wage approvals for the '24-25 school year. Thank you. Any questions, I guess?
No questions.
Or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
I'll just offer a thank you, because I know a lot of work went into putting this together on the back end. It sounds very short when you read the paper, but I know there were a number of you involved in answering a lot of questions and putting a lot of like work in to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 12.5, Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will present the educational interpreter special education item. This will appear on the May 13 consent agenda.
Just going to scroll through every one of these. There we go. Okay, we have a student that will be transitioning to our Sand Lake Elementary School, who will require an educational interpreter, and we don't, we currently have one interpreter for another student, but we will need an additional interpreter for this particular student in order for the student to have their needs met. And so I am coming to you to request the ability to post that position for starting the next school year.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you. All right, we will then move on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or as discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
Absolutely.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Barb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I just have one quick comment. Just wanted to take a moment to thank Holly Holloway. She has served as our EA in the, as a library media, in the Library Media Center for over 30-plus years. Just want to thank her for her service and her time and that. And I just think of, when you commit your, really your life to an organization, is just, the least we can do is just thank, thank her and congratulate her when we, when we see her. So, thank you, Holly.
Okay, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Kadeja.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a whole lot tonight. I just wanted to congratulate the folks who are taking office at this meeting. Super excited. It's wild to think that it's been a whole year that I've been able to serve on this board, and we're going into the next one, but super excited for what this next year has to bring. And then just, I just want to say, I'm always really impressed, especially when we hear all of the bids that are coming in for the site improvements at all of our elementary schools and our middle school as well. Just incredibly impressed with the financial stewardship that is going on and how frequently we're able to hear that things are coming in underbid or underestimates. Just really thankful for that. It helps us do our job a little bit better when we have folks who are taking that financial aspect of our dashboard very seriously. So yeah, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. All right, Chris?
I would just say, we had a policy meeting tonight. We will be moving forward quite a few, policy and handbook language to the board for first review at our next meeting. I guess I just wanted to say congratulations to our 17 student athletes who signed letter of intent to play their sports to the next level. That's, that's quite an accomplishment for all the hard work they put in through, I mean, literally their whole lives. I'm sure to get to that level. And then I just wanted to say congratulations to our, our high school quiz bowl team for doing so well at state this year, so.
All right, thank you. Maggie?
I don't have a whole lot tonight either, but on the heels of the policy meeting update, I just want to note that it was mentioned, I didn't write down the numbers, it's 474 policies have now been reviewed, updated, and aligned with Niola. So, big kudos to Stacy for keeping all of that organized and for the leadership team who helped make all of that happen in the last year. It's a lot of policies. And then I was looking at the calendar, and I think this is Rachel's last board meeting, so I just want to make sure that I say thank you to Rachel Fager for all of her many, many contributions to Evergreen and to our school district, and wishing you best of luck in your new role.
All right, thank you. Bridgette?
I keep thinking about your questions to Steve Doyle tonight, Jennifer, and around funding to our, you know, for our districts. And I, I can't say enough about the amazing directors we have in this school district, and Dan and Chad and Crystal, the work. I mean, we've had so many board workshops and the work that goes into just facilities and transportation and this new compensation model and benefits. I mean, it is just really incredible, the work that this district has accomplished this year. And I really, I think our administration team, our district office is, is just amazing. I think about the DEI work that's going to be happening, and then we always have so many, you know, building leaders here at school board meetings, being so invested in our students. And I just, I, I will never be able to show the gratitude that all of you deserve. So thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Bridgette. Barb?
I would also just like to say best of luck to Rachel. I want you to know that your positivity is going to be missed here. I've always appreciated that. So thank you and best of luck to you.
All right, and we have our new student rep here this evening. So Keven, if you have a few words you'd like to say?
Oh, okay. I would like to say thank you for the students for voting me in. It's an honor to be up here. I'd also like to say that good luck to the upcoming sports. I know that when I looked at the calendar, that it looks pretty busy this week. And good luck to the upcoming state people going to solo ensemble on May 4. I know that's a big deal, because you have to get a one-star to go at UWL, and I think that's it.
All right, thank you. And then I just like to note that I did attend the letter of intent signing day last week, and I want to congratulate all the athletes with their decisions to continue both their academic and athletic pursuits after they graduate. I also want to congratulate Barb for being appointed to the Wisconsin School Board Boundary Appeal Board. I, I'm super excited that we have someone right here from our board representing us at the state level. I also want to thank Rachel, she's already gotten an email from me, but I just, for everything that you've done for this district. And I know, I can't imagine the number of staff and students that you've impacted over the years. So thank you so much for everything you've done. And then I just wanted to welcome Keven here to our board, and I look forward to continuing to work with you over the next year. All right, moving on to the school board written reports. The board has been provided with notes from the February 12 DEI Committee and the March 20 Wellness Committee meetings, so please take a look at those. And then our upcoming board meeting schedule, it gets busy and busy in May. We have a board meeting on May 13 at 7:00 p.m. We have senior recognition night at 6:30 p.m. at the Fine Arts Center. We have high school graduation at 11:00 a.m. down at the La Crosse Center on May 25. And then May 28, we're going to try something new with the retire reception this year, and we're going to hold it here in the boardroom before the board meeting, which will be at, the board meeting will be at 7:00 p.m. So that's on a Tuesday, because that's the day after Memorial, Memorial Day on, on May 28. All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Okay. To adjourn the meeting at 8:11 p.m., motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.